How are you?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll please bow your heads and join me for the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you all, please be seated.
Yeah, our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, September 11th, nine one one, at ten thirty a.m. here in this room. And our next public workshop is scheduled at this time for ten thirty a.m., also in this room. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Here.
Ms. Frenchco?
Here.
Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated August twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, and the regular meeting dated August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
A motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Um, because the audios are skipping and there's no written minutes and they're not accessible and I still don't believe that they're compliant, no.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number four is to approve the transfer of appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number five is to adopt resolution accepting the amount and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for the calendar year two thousand and twenty five. The complete, the completed prescribed form as approved by the Trumbull County Budget Commission on August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty four was submitted along with the word file of rate resolution.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number six is to authorize the purchase of a Dragon four point oh kilowatt HF X-ray unit with DR integration kit with touchscreen and to approve the contract with Maven Imaging for the purchase of the portable X-ray unit in the total amount of thirty six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Discussion. This, this agenda item does, it says that, um, it was approved by the prosecutor's office and there was no prosecutor's thing. Did you guys receive that and I didn't? Any verification that it was? Then I'm just gonna say-
It was approved by the prosecutor.
Okay, so here's the deal. I, I didn't, I didn't make these rules. I'm, I'm glad that they're in place now, but, um, they say that whenever agenda items come on and Alex made this, that they're supposed to have the prosecutor's opinion. Nick Coggins, I hope you have that with you today because it wasn't with your email. And, uh, on, on this particular item, not only did it not have the prosecutor's opinion with it, it didn't even have a copy of, of the, it says, um, see the attached contract and there was absolutely no contract attract, attached. It was in some MSG form that was not downloadable. So basically, if you guys vote on approve this today, you're voting on something that no one on the Board of Commissioners has looked at because it's not even in an openable, um, con, uh, format. So that is the job of our clerk before she puts these things on the agenda to make sure that they, and I don't know if the, the, um, the HR office can actually put together a checklist for her. So every time she makes sure, so she makes sure that every time before she adds them to the agenda, that she physically sees the prosecutor's opinion there, that she physically sees a copy of the contract. Um, those are things that we need to vote on things. It's very basic. Her job is, is very easy. It's to, it's done for her because the, the department heads are writing these agenda items. All she has to do is put them on the agenda after she verifies that the attachments are there and they're not.
We have no idea what I do.
Four items today, so-
Move on.
It's a problem, please.
Are you out of here yet? Can we move on? Never mind, you're under censure anyway.
I'm, actually, I'm disappointed in the board to vote on things that they haven't even reviewed.
You have no idea what we've reviewed and what we have.
Well, we, we don't have a copy of it, so.
You don't have a copy of it.
You don't either.
How do you know that?
Because I was CC'd in the email.
I'm here and I get the hard copies of it.
Where are the hard copies of it?
In my office.
I was told that we're not, uh, is Lisa making hard copies?
When asked, yes, she is.
Oh, okay, because I've asked for hard copies.
I actually started to call on the phone yesterday. Did you call him up and ask him about this? Did you ask him for one?
Lisa-
Probably not, you weren't here.
Do you, did, did you receive a hard copy of this tomorrow?
Yes, I did.
Lisa, why didn't you give it to me?
Well, it might, it might have been provided by the coroner at the workshop.
No, she, he said that you gave it, so when asked.
I'm not gonna get hurt.
Can we please move on?
Again, so today-
Call question. You're not gonna grandstand here today.
What I printed, you gave to them, but give me-
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Disgusting that are-
Now you're, now you're an expert on medical equipment.
Right, no, but I am an expert on reviewing contracts and making sure that they're compliant.
Where is your law degree from in reviewing contracts?
I'm sorry, but that's what I've done my whole life.
But you have no background in it. You're not an attorney. Prosecutor's office is right there and they reviewed it.
And the prosecutors, we don't have anything, and I'm not saying anything against our prosecutor's office because it's up to the staff to submit that with their agenda item. That's a new procedure and it says that it was reviewed and we don't have any-
If you had a question about it, you could call the prosecutor's office.
That's not it. They're supposed to-
Right. What is your vote, please, for, uh, item six?
Because we haven't reviewed anything and our board is voting on something that they haven't seen because I received the same information. It didn't follow the proper process and we didn't receive it. I'm going to abstain and it's disappointing that the board, these two men vote yes and rubber stamp things that they haven't.
We had the prosecutor, we had the coroner here at a meeting that you did not attend.
I heard, okay.
Item number seven is to-
Motion passed, wait, that last one.
Item number seven is to grant permission to the Hartford Township Trustees to close the road listed. Five points Hartford Road, County Highway one eighty seven, closing date Saturday, September twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, closing times five thirty P.M. to seven P.M. approximately.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eight is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Jonathan Kelson to the position of custodian, pay range three zero years, fourteen forty five per hour, with the Maintenance Department effective Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four.
Motion approved.
Second that.
And then on the discussion for this one, I re, I did receive information, I believe, that Alex might have sent it. Your staff, did you know what it is? It's, it's the job description and the application which proves to the board that this person applied and meets the qualifications. That's what you always submit. Yes, I, right, and I appreciate that. And I, I believe that that's the standard throughout the county, if I'm not mistaken, especially when the- Right, this is the hu, this is the human resources, uh, the department. And when you were working for, um, John Gargano, you provided those same things to us. I remember. You were, yes, you were his administrative assistant and you were providing those same things and I thank you for that.
Item number nine, excuse me, item number eight, I need to take the vote. Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number nine is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign on behalf of the Trumbull County Board of Job, Department of Job and Family Services, the contracts per list dated August twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. Contracts create thirty three training opportunities and two job opportunities at a total cost of two hundred eight thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars and ninety cents, fully funded through Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
Motion approved.
Second that.
And then discussion on this one, where is the copy of that agreement as well? Because we don't have that. And I know the fact when Alex was over in that role, um, she sent those to us. So we don't have that.
John Gargano, Job and Family Services, Commissioner, I beg to differ with you. Those agreements were not sent at that time either. Those agreements are roughly anywhere from twenty to forty six pages. These are what they look like, they're standard templates and they're usually only for about five thousand, eight thousand dollars with an employer and or an institution of education. We don't send those over, but if you want me to send, you want me to send, if you want me to send thirty three of these to the prosecutor's office for them to review, I'll do that. But it's just gonna waste a lot of their time, uh, on these items. They're not contracts of any significant amount and it's not general fund money. It's from the, uh, workforce investment.
Right, but the county is still audited on things to make sure that they're correct.
We are audited.
I'm sorry, the county is audited on all of the work that takes place, the commission, under the commissioners. And so reviewing those things and a lot of the things that came up when I had an exit interview last year related to your department. And while I'm still here, I want to make sure that we're at least reviewing these things. So the, we should, even if it's not, even, even though I understand on these agreements, we don't, because of the nature of them, they're, you've reviewed them, I get that, but looking at them, looking at the dates, seeing when they came, those are things that we need to see. I mean, I know you're getting a little bit better because it's August twenty eighth was the effective date of the contract and it's only September, but if we could get to the point where we're actually approving them ahead of when they take effect, that would be wonderful.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
But the, the other issue with that is getting them back from those employers, those institutions. That's becomes the difficult part also.
Well, we need to start earlier and get them back. If they want to participate, then they need to, then they need to make sure that they have, you have those things.
I can't, I can't force them to get it back to me on time. We send it to them, we tell them when we need it back. Uh, they don't send it back on time. We followed up with a phone call. The individual that may have to be signing them is out of the office on vacation. That's what happens.
Right, you could still get them done earlier. I don't, there's-
Maybe I'll try to get him two years in advance, maybe that will suffice.
Okay. I mean, a couple of days would be better than a month late.
Okay, so for number nine, Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
I'm going to abstain because I haven't seen anything that we're voting on for this agenda item.
Motion passes of the majority of the board.
Item number ten is to approve the personnel action for the employment of a total of four candidates for the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services. The prospective employees, their position and their rate of compensation are specified below. The candidates would begin employment Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four, receiving full benefits and will serve a nine-month probationary period for the Department of Job and Family Services. And those candidates are, um, Stephanie Tripolis, Amelia Cole, Thomas Hill and Sebastian Finnegan.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
And a point of clarification for, um, John Gargano because your employee did not send over the resumes or the job, um, descriptions for these ones either. Is there, do you have those with you?
Job and Family Services, I do have the job descriptions of the two, uh, positions, uh, transportation and certi, certification worker, health check.
So are, why are those listed as level two? That was a question that I had.
That's just their title, uh, on the, uh, on the, uh, pay scale.
Is there a one?
No, there's not a one, there's a two and you have a three.
So whenever people are hired in, they're hired at-
It depends on what position, uh, is they're applying for or is up for, uh, vacancy. In this case, they were certification workers two. Uh, they get paid a little bit less. Then there's the other caseworkers that are eligibility workers, three. They get a little bit of a higher pay based upon that.
I understand. I just wanted to find out, so the, one has been eliminated and there, there's no way for ease of understanding to make the one, the two, the new one, you know what I mean?
You're not gonna micromanage this department. If you want to learn about JFS, schedule a day and go, why don't you go work over it?
This is a valid question.
Been there four years, you can go figure out how they work and what their titles are.
Classifications of all the jobs, okay? Uh, there is no case are, one, there's twos and threes.
Okay, so you have those, the, when those come over, a, and they did before, the final candidates that you were selected for the purpose of making sure that they, um, that they met those requirements, we would get those things. What Alex is providing to us from her HR office is the same thing that Bob Myrano is providing to us. Um, well, sometimes, um, for the most part, and, and I just would like for us to see that because when Anna was there, and I know that there's, there's been a lot of change in your department, but I've been asking Chelsea for those things and she doesn't give me anything more than, hey, please hire these guys. John Gargano signed off of, on it and here's our ranking. And it's arbitrary, you know, like I see the points, but I still want to see the resume to make sure that the mes, resume matches the job description. I think that's our due diligence.
That's fine.
Okay.
Chelsea, she's only doing what she's, uh, supposed to do, uh, and, and told to do. But, uh, we will look at that and we will send the job descrip-
Job descriptions and then the final person, their resume so that we could see that it's matching up. You know, the, the hirees is what we were getting before and I just like those hirees. So do you have, can I see those? And do you have?
These are the only copies and the other commissioner-
Okay. It's okay, I'll give it back to you. I, I-
Famous last words. I'll give it back to you.
Okay.
Commissioner, can you do that on your own time?
This is something-
We're in the middle of a meeting here and we'd like to continue on, this isn't a, let's educate Nikki about JFS Day.
You don't, I'm, okay, I'm just looking because I don't. And then, so you're saying that every, that they meet these qualifications and they have the education that's re, that's required, but I would like, you understand why we want to see that, right?
Yeah, of course you want to see it. Your daughter's sister's on there and you want to scrutinize and probably try to discredit the poor girl.
She had great grades and was, is an excellent candidate. That's ridiculous.
Okay, well, that's what you're reviewing, which is kind of conflict anyone for you to pipe in on that.
Not at all.
You can get a, HR director, HR administrator there, plus it depends on which department it is. That administrator, they will review the patient, they'll review patients and if they meet the minimum qualification, then they get a letter requesting that they, you know, come in for a little, you know.
Okay.
Don't meet the minimum qualifications, they are also advised that they don't meet qualifications for that.
Okay, thank you. I just had, I had questions on why they were level two as opposed to level one and that's entry level, but that's good. And then it's, it appears that at least one of them is overqualified, so. Thank you.
Okay, so for item number ten, Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number eleven is to approve an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, the Trumbull County Planning Commission and the Lake to River, River Economic Development Agency and authorized Director Julie Green in accordance with O R C section three zero seven point zero seven B three to execute the agreement for Economic Development Services for the period commencing September eighth, two thousand and twenty four and continuing for a period of twelve months. Trumbull County's share for the contract will be forty five thousand dollars, paid in four equal installments of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Um, it, this says that it was reviewed and approved by the prosecutor's office, but it wasn't submitted. You have a copy of the email. Normally Julie sends them and you, I don't know if you'd-
Uh, yes, Commissioner, this was reviewed and approved by the prosecutor's office. It's the PDF attached to the agenda submission. So that agenda submission has two documents attached to it. One's a Word doc with the, with all the edits they requested. The other is the PDF showing their review and approval of it.
I saw, I saw the contract, that's what I-
Yeah, there should be a PDF attached to that as well. There's two attachments on that. I don't have it with me because-
He did, you could just ask him, he, that's fine.
Yeah, I did not bring it because it was orig, it was submitted on the original agenda item.
Bill? You saw that and approved this contract, right?
Uh, Jason Toth.
Okay.
Jason.
Yeah, those are, those are typically a completely separate, like she'll, she'll attach the email or something like that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, and that's, that's, it's two attachments, one's a Word doc, one's the PDF for the email.
There's another thing that I wanted to talk about and, um, so they're ta, they are now the point of contact for economic development and so on. That, I understand what Lake River is doing. My question is, why are we still paying? Why are we still paying the Chamber of Commerce? Because they no longer possess those same duties. So it would be, um, specific, it could be specific non-performance because they're not, they're no longer the entity that does those things, yet I believe-
If we are still paying the Chamber for anything, it is not for Economic Development Services.
We have that contract, was the contract, because I, nothing came before me to terminate that contract and unfortunately, I don't get the things that I asked for from the office, so I have to do them via public records request and it takes months. So back when I knew that they were just tran, that they were transitioning and no longer providing those service, I want to confirm that the county is not still paying them for a service that they do not provide. And so I, I think that that's, could be a potential audit finding because of the fact that they're not doing what they were contracted to do because of a change. You, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, uh, they, I, the last payment, I, I don't know when the last payment was made. That is something that's handled internally in the Commissioner's office. But, uh, they, they are, we're not renewing a contract. If the Commissioners are paying them for anything, uh, since that last payment, it is not for Economic Development Services. We're not entering into any new contracts with them. The existing contract that Lake to River took over, um, expires on September seventh, I believe.
I understand. So my, so then my concern is if the board would, uh, agree that we're not paying someone to do something that someone else has been doing, if we can look at that, um, because we would need to end that contract, the agreement, because they're no longer providing that. You, Bill knows what I'm talking about.
Bill's just putting words in your mouth, so.
No, he doesn't.
You can reply.
I mean, we're in a contract with someone to provide services for a year and-
You know, Bill, you know.
He does. He understands what specific not, what non-performance is, he's not, he's-
Nobody in the world knows what goes through your mind for they're supposed to understand what you're talking about.
I understand that you're, you're not capable.
Commissioner, I think, I think what, uh, what you're looking for is going to be details on the transition period from the Regional Chamber being identified as the Local Economic Development Organization for Trumbull County and Lake to River being established, becoming the Local Economic Development Organization. So there was an internal transition period with them. I don't know how those finances, those duties transferred.
Their funds that they were receiving were going to, I just want to make sure you, you, you do understand what I'm saying, so, okay. I just, at least there's someone in the room that can follow the way I think.
There are Boyarco with Lake to River. Um, this contract that you had previously with the Chamber expires and then this is the renewal of that same work, but with a separate entity as Lake to River. So there should be no payment to the Chamber relative to this specific work. You might be referring to Valley Vision where I know that there is a contract, no?
Separate.
Correct, I mean, that's what I'm, I wasn't sure if that's what you're referring to. And I certainly can't speak to what the Chamber is looking on with regard to that.
And, and without looking at that agreement, I think it's important for the Board of Commissioners to review that because sometimes they say there's a clause that you have to let them know that there's non, going to be a non-renewal or something like that, so.
Then look at the agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will say-
Then let me be the county-
During the transition time that Nick mentioned, um, the payment was being made to the Chamber. That payment came to Lake to River, so we received all of those funds since May first. And then this contract, uh, with the Chamber expires this month and then this is the renewal with the new entity.
Thank you for explaining that because that's the piece I didn't know. I didn't realize that the Chamber was, was, since they, they were not performing, forming those duties, that they were forwarding it to. That's been on my mind since it happened.
Yep.
And I, and that's when I tried to obtain the contract information and the payments. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so for item eleven, Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Item number twelve is to authorize the advertisement of a public notice in a newspaper of general circulation published in the Tribune Chronicle on September ninth, two thousand and twenty four, announcing the timeframe- announcing the timeframe for and location of the request for price proposal packages for the PY twenty three Community Development Block Grant Community Development Program, Project One, Activity Two, Revolving Loan Fund, Howland Scope Center Improvements Project.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to enter into a non-reimbursable extension agreement for the extension of a sanitary sewer in accordance with O R C section three zero seven point seven three with Chris Vilwak, owner of on Deepak Drive, Howland Township, Trumbull County, Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Mosquito Creek Subdistrict, known as Deepak Drive Sanitary Sewer Extension, Project Number three dash S dash twenty three. And to approve detailed sewer drawings of Deepak Drive Sanitary Sewer Extension for the extension of a sanitary sewer on Deepak Drive, Howland Township, uh, Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Mosquito Creek Subdistrict, known as Deepak Drive Sanitary Sewer Extension, Project Three dash S dash twenty three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to approve change order number two with Carrilla Contractors, Inc. For the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Number Five dash S dash eighteen, in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred ten dollars and thirty one cents, revising the total contract value to two million five hundred eighty three thousand five hundred ninety six dollars and fifty eight cents. The change order consists of lowering the flow line elevations between manholes eleven and thirteen within the village of Yankee Lake along Brockway Avenue, increasing the depth of manhole twelve. This will eliminate the need for the county to provide three grinder pumps at an approximate cost of ten thousand per grinder station for three household connections and provide the households with gravity service. The entire cost of the change order is in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred ten dollars and thirty one cents.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
And then, Director, they didn't even start this yet, right? They're waiting for us to approve, the work's not done. I know it's coming over perfectly, I just wanted to make sure about that.
Uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, they are awaiting our approval of this to move forward.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate the changes that you've made, it's coming over properly, and thank you.
Would you rather have them delayed the work and cost a lot more money and overrun because of it?
Let's just say that there is a period, there was a point in time where we were getting months and months and months of change orders when the work was already done and we were signing off on things from the year before, and this is absolutely perfect the way he's doing it now. And I'm grateful that the county is doing things in a way that that would prevent any type of finding. So I'm I'm happy to see that improvement.
Don't ride that wave too long, Gary, the other foot's gonna drop eventually.
Yeah, he's, he's been doing it for a while, that's.
Just hold on, hold on.
I complained about that for about two years or whatever, and now he's he's doing it absolutely perfectly, and I'm just happy for it, so.
Mr. Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to accept maintenance bond number seven nine zero one one five one seven three four issued by Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company, submitted by D S L Excavating LLC contractor for a sanitary sewer extension for the Lee Road Sanitary Sewer Extension, Brookfield, Ohio, Project Number Nine dash S dash twenty two. The maintenance bond is in the amount of five thousand seven hundred forty two dollars, is for a two-year period effective August thirteenth, twenty twenty four through August thirteenth, twenty twenty six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the Pendleton Gilmer Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Number Six dash S dash twenty two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to adopt a resolution authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Number Seven dash S dash twenty two.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the Smith Stewart Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Number Two dash S dash seventeen.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to adopt a resolution authorizing Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the County of Trumbull for planning, design, and/or construction of the State Line Road Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, Number One dash S dash nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty is to authorize Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, to to issue the notice to proceed to Pollard Land Services for the Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, known as County Project Number Five dash S dash sixteen in Vienna Township with the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District, Mosquito Creek Subdistrict.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty one is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permit to haul steel coils requested by the company listed, Jero Transportation Services, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty two is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed. And those companies are Enbridge Gas, Ohio, and Custom Cable Construction, doing business as Custom Yutelcom, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty three is to appoint Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to serve as the chairperson of the nine one one Program Review Committee, per O R C one two eight point zero six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Hey, that conducts our regularly scheduled business uh for today. Um, some other business from the floor or from the uh board. Next Tuesday, we have our regularly scheduled workshop, uh, ten thirty AM in this room. Um, I'd like to move that to eleven so that we can have the grand opening ribbon cutting for the uh uh action and flying high uh Trumbull Mobile Market that we're gonna do out front, we invite them to be our guests, cut the ribbon in front of the building, they're giving out uh grocery cards to shop inside the mobile market to help with the food desert we have in some areas of the county. Um, and I I don't think it'd be proper to start a meeting and then go down there where we can't video, take minutes and notes or anything like that while we're doing the ribbon cutting, so I'd like to be able to do the ribbon cutting with them, they've already released their press release for ten thirty, so.
I have no issue with that.
Retract their press release or anything, so I'd like to move our meeting to make it eleven o'clock in this room instead of ten thirty.
Where, where are they going to be located?
Uh, out on High Street somewhere.
On High Street.
Yeah, we're gonna work with the Sheriff's Department to find two spots where they can park the the um thirty-some foot or forty-foot vehicle. People will be able to come and shop in there, and they're giving away gift cards um for people to be able to shop um inside of it tomorrow and, or, I'm sorry, and uh next Tuesday and make their publicity launch, and then they'll be all over the county after that.
Are, uh, is this your motion?
I'm asking for discussion on it first, what do you think, is it okay?
I'm fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Problem with that? Commissioner, and can we, should we do this as just a consensus of doing it, or do you recommend that we call it as a special meeting or something different, um, general purpose meeting? Since we said at the beginning of the year, I want to make sure we follow procedure correctly, we ran it by the prosecutor, he gave an opinion. Um, but I think this is simple, we, we announce our meeting as at eleven instead of ten thirty. Um, notify the press as such in a press release, and I think that should cover it, but I'd like your opinions also.
That's fine.
You want my opinion?
Yeah.
Then you make, you make a motion, someone seconds it, and then we vote to change the meeting. Uh, the rest of it is good to say, then then you notice it properly, because anything that deviates from what you'd what you resolved at that reorganizational meeting, um, if it's the time or the place or the date needs to have journal, journal a vote, okay, and then, and then you advertise it, so that's correct, but I would do a vote.
Okay, all right, and like, uh, I make a motion that we schedule our regularly scheduled uh notice meeting from the beginning of the year for Tuesday, September tenth meeting, to be at eleven o'clock instead of ten thirty AM also in this room. For me?
I'll just make, can I make it?
You can make it, it'll save us attorney fees if you make it.
Uh, motion to change the time of our regularly scheduled workshop to eleven o'clock for next, from from ten thirty to eleven for.
September tenth.
September tenth.
I'll second it.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. So we will have that at ten thirty out in front of this building, and we invite the public to come and see the uh the action in Flying High Mobile Market. Um, I want to thank Pastor Todd Johnson and Rose Carter for initiating this. I think it's gonna be a great thing for our community, come and see it at ten thirty, then we'll start our meeting at eleven. Okay, any other business from the, from the bench before we go to the public?
A couple things, one of them related to the discussion yesterday about um parking at the courthouse in the grass or something, or creating a parking place there. Is that?
The courthouse?
Yeah, uh, the uh, uh, Danny was talking about putting, meeting with McCosky from the city of Warren and Bill Hart to create parking um next to the courthouse. Are you talking about inside the specifically where?
Uh, anywhere we could find a place to put the judges, to get them off the street, to open up spots for the public.
Okay, so.
That's convenient for the judges.
One, I wholly disagree with taking any green space away on our courthouse square. And secondly, um, this is something that our prosecutor's office has told us about before, and I'll probably make that motion if everyone agrees on that today. Uh, we need to do a title search because we don't know what areas of that courthouse square are the, are the counties or the um, the cities because of um, like urban legend, so to speak. People talk about how it was gifted and some certain parts are the responsibility of the county. Um, but I, what I'd like to, I'd like to see is an actual title search, they're not very expensive. Um, and I'd like to make a motion.
Is that regarding the parking or just on the?
It's regarding the parking and some other matters that we've discussed. And the prosecutor's office said that they don't have any record of any transaction that occurred. It it happened before all of us, I believe, were here, and it's just, it's, it's just a wise thing to know the boundaries of the property that is, it'll show if there's like maybe Eastman's or whatever. So alls I'm asking, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna make a motion, a motion to have a title search conducted for our courthouse square by I'd say Berkey because that's what his office does. That's their, their business, they do.
Just choosing somebody out of?
Well, no, that's who you guys use for everything anyway, the stuff that's even outside of his scope, but his scope is actually transactional real estate.
There's other earnings that you could choose.
Fine, Nader, pick, pick one.
That's not exactly how we should do it, according to you, but.
It is a transactional title search that's no more than.
Sure, just pick a mic in there.
Right. Let, let him tell you, since you don't believe me.
Bill Danso, Prosecutor's Office, um, just, good morning, just to clear up uh any confusion that's, that's ongoing about the courthouse and the courthouse square. I think it, it goes a little bit beyond urban legend because it's, it is, as far as I recall, recorded. Um, at least in the tax map department, and then there would need to be maybe some deed research to figure out how it all came about. But as far as we have all understood, including the records in tax map, it appears that the county owns the courthouse itself, the property underneath it, and a, a small border around the courthouse. The rest of courthouse square is owned by the city of Warren, uh, the municipality, they're the ones who care for it. They do all the, the Christmas decorating and all those holiday decorations that go out there for various holidays and events. Uh, if the board is going to have a title search, the title search is likely.
You can tell them what it is.
Well, the, the title search is likely just gonna show how the county acquired title, how the city acquired title. And I can tell you from experience in some of the title-related matters, we've had some of the public property that goes back to even the Northwest Ordinance of, I think, seventeen eighty seven. The records are not great because the property hasn't transferred out of government hands hardly ever. So the records are old, the records are, are, are what they are at this point. Um, what I would say is if, if this is really a curiosity that the board has is you might want to consider also a survey to figure out what those old documents would mean. Again, with the fair warning that I'm not sure what it's.
I'm not even sure what we're, what, why, why we're doing.
Well, that, that's up to you guys, I'm not sure either what the goal is.
We went from parking to this.
If you do the title search, if you do the title search first, then it will demonstrate whether or not there's a need for a survey, once you actually see all the, they go through all the old transfers. You know?
It might, it might.
I wouldn't do them at the same time, I would just at least want to have a title search so we can see specifically, because, you know, it could be, the, the, the outcome is we could find, we could find out who actually is responsible for certain things, maybe there is an agreement um that we're, we're not aware of, because I know that they say that Warren covers part of the maintenance and we cover the other, but there's, there's nothing definitive, and that's been a question I've.
They cover the maintenance around the courthouse and the courthouse is ours, the rest of courthouse square is the city's.
Right, so, so alls we have is the footprint of the, of the courthouse. Then, and people are talking about adding parking and things around there. It's, it's important before you do anything to have a title search before you. You understand what I'm saying?
When are we adding parking ground there?
Way down the road.
Okay, I, either way, this is something that's come up on numerous occasions, people, people have asked about um uh, individuals driving through the courthouse square to have events neck, because the city manages uh, the leasing of that, or renting of that courthouse square for festivals. And sometimes it's not a festival, it's just a little small thing, and you, and I get complaints of people driving vehicles through the, through the courthouse square, and I can't really respond definitively without the board having.
Who's driving through courthouse square?
Oh, my gosh.
Well, I, I'm honestly, I don't know.
All I can say from the legal perspective is what you guys plan or what you want to do, that's up to the board. But I, I would say that if a representative of the city has been involved in these discussions, whether or not they go forward, I have no idea. But perhaps what you'd want to see is this, is this something that the city's even open to before you go getting surveys and title searches? Because if the city's not open to it, and the county and the city can't come to an agreement, there may not be a need for it. If there is, again, that's up to the board, but.
Talking about for titles, prior, prior to even this discussion, we. Prior, prior to even this discussion, we were talking about the complaints and the maintenance of the courthouse square. I, I believe, I can't be certain, but I think it might've been Commissioner Malloy.
About, we had an issue with the sidewalks and people chopping in the city took care of it.
But what I'm saying is it would be nice to actually have that so everyone moving forward knows what's ours and what's theirs. And I think that that would be good rather than just like, we shouldn't have gentleman's agreements in the county.
Well, I don't think it's a gentleman's.
Let's get back to parking.
Yeah, I'll let you guys decide what you believe is best.
I don't know how we got off on this.
Well, I've been wanting to have a, um, survey for a long time and before we've had discussion about it, but it's never come to fruition.
I don't, I don't think we did spend any dollars on a survey on a hypothetical when we haven't even had to talk with the city yet about the overall parking.
Something that relates to a lot of things. Um, and you, you would want to know whose properties, whose and who's responsible for what instead of just doing it without knowing. So that. It makes sense, but I understand that you guys might not recognize that.
I have no idea what you said.
I under, I know you don't.
I really don't.
It's a title search. If anyone.
I know, but it's not going to gain us any property. That property Bill has just said.
Property.
Bill has just said that that property around courthouse square is not ours. We own the footprint of the actual building and the landscaping around the building. That is it.
How do we, we know?
He just said it.
He said it. So that's how we know.
He's our prosecutor.
He said he hasn't seen, he, he said he hasn't.
He hasn't seen the transactions, but that's what, that's how the ownership is.
That's not, he said that that's how it appears on our maps. It doesn't, it, okay. So, yeah, I wholly disagree with that. And then.
So you don't want to solve the parking problem here? You don't want to readjust or do anything we can to provide more public parking spots?
No, I don't want to take green space from the courthouse square to create parking for.
It's not ours to take.
I think it's, it's, it's terrible. Obviously, I know you don't live in Warren, but it's, it would be. One of the things that we have from an economic development standpoint even is the aesthetics of our downtown and it's an attraction. So to have parking lots in the courthouse square is.
And nobody's ever proposed that. We're looking at a big master plan for parking.
Not even.
Including enforcing parking.
It should not even be considered.
And hour limits for parking. It's part of a whole big picture.
Even ours, okay.
Parking.
Okay. Ridiculous. Hopefully the city of Warren will, they're not gonna go for that. Uh, was there anything else? Oh, and then, and another consideration is, um, the, the, how? Already people do this. They. When there is a delivery truck, they already use those, one of the clerk spots in the front for the vehicles. To drop people or to drop off their stuff and to go back out. And, um, I just think that because there's two spaces there, if they had a. Were able to share one of them or just let the public know that if they're going in and out with their hazards on. That they could use those spaces because some people are so incredibly focused on following those rules. Oh, I can't stop here for even a second. Whereas delivery people sometimes do and it would make it a lot easier if someone's running in for a few minutes if they could use one of those. Front ones because there's two for the clerks and the title transfers. You know what I'm talking about?
I do, but that's up to the cities on the delineated the spots on who gets to park where. And that's a discussion again, we need to have with the city.
City road.
Do that.
Well, okay, yeah.
And that's why schedule a meeting to go over the overall whole parking of the downtown Warren area to try to make it more convenient. For the public to be able to get in and do business with the county.
And I absolutely, um, would not send a memo out for our maintenance. We have maintenance people who sometimes are coming in and out, bringing things, heavy things out of the front door. They cannot. Go and drive all the way around the back to send something out and say, oh, you can't park. In the front, even if your maintenance dropping or picking up.
No one ever said that.
I heard what, what was that?
That, what she said was when they're just parking a car when they're not doing business. To park in the employee lot and don't take up one of the spots on Harmon like you do.
I just want to be clear that that's all. I was just clarifying because people are. Actually doing work sometimes and so maintenance does have to come in and out. Okay.
Then there is a loading and unloading zone there that is delineated by the city for that purpose.
Sometimes they. Sometimes in the front. Okay.
If you would park in your spot, that would free up one more spot for the public to be able to utilize.
Okay.
Or at least abide by the time limit that you're allowed to park on Harmon. You're the biggest violator in the city.
Point of order. This has no bearing on. County business. And then, um, as far as the issue with. Um, that contract for the parking lot. I don't think that it's, I don't, I think that it's expensive and he has the ability to purchase, you know, the. Over at the. On High Street, but by the Hippodrome, there's parking that's gated and people can pay to go in. I wonder if that could be a solution for Mr. Valeski if he were to invest in something like that. And then make it, and then people, if they wanted to, um, park, they could, they could use that. If not, then they could go to the far lot. Of course, we can't control what someone does with their property, but that might be, um. That might be a consideration for him as opposed to us leasing a property that's extremely.
We put out a request for parking. He. Submitted a bid to the request. His bid that he had by the majority of the board. Was not acceptable with the price that he was at and he could do what he wants to do with his, with his property. I hope he does for the benefit of the public, put some type of lot there, but that's his business and what he does with his property.
Relatively wonky, the way the whole thing went out and came back. I didn't have any input that in that night, I called that when it happened.
Um, you sure didn't jump in to help, did you? You sat there and just rooted for it to fail.
I said I wanted to delay it. I asked who wrote it. I wanted to, um. Have an opportunity to do it the right way and to delay it. And both of you said that you wanted to move forward on it. That's normally what happens. So I think if it was actually put out, um, in a better way.
Then he'd have a better price if it was put out in a better way.
Received.
A new parking lot would appear somewhere if you did.
I don't know what we're doing here.
What's that?
You were talking with them, you said.
We've talked to him many times.
Okay.
Again, everyone.
Workshop. We've been to workshops and you have in the last.
Again, we, we talk about all these things at workshop.
Right, and I.
And this is not the place to do it. This is the place to vote on things and move forward. These things are hashed out and discussed and questions are asked at workshops. Can I please finish? They're, they're, they're discussed at workshops and you can ask any question under the sun you want and you'll have those answers so that you come here prepared.
Right, I, I, I do not sometimes have, I'm not. Afforded the opportunity to speak at those though other, um, other people are. Um, and is there a problem with us discussing any type of contract with him before any, a bid is awarded?
Not gonna. Comment on.
That's something that I'm concerned with as well is if you guys are having conversations with him about. About his contract and you're acknowledging that in workshops. Um, that might be problematic. If there's someone else who's interested, so.
We haven't acted on it.
There was someone else interested that would have put bids in.
Okay. That's it. Um, and then the final thing that I wanted to, um, have a little bit of discussion about. Um, relates to the funding that we said that we were committing for the Trumbull Memorial Hospital. And making sure that we're doing that in a compliant way. And, um. The process. Where we are in the process for that.
Go ahead.
Well, one of.
Nothing's been committed yet.
Nothing's been committed yet. One of the other things is the, uh, because I, I express my, some of my concerns. Um, about the pro forma and, and how unsustainable it is with that lease there. Um, the lease amounts, I think about seven point five million and then. Also. When the county expends any funds, they have to be for Trumbull County. And the way the offer was written, it includes, um, a Mahoning County property. So I think that that.
There is no offer written at all. The steward, the, the offer they put in is null and void because steward is turning their properties over to MPT, which we have never negotiated with. Nobody on the board is negotiated with.
It's not correct.
And on September tenth, it's going to be decided who actually owns the property and the license and then you're right back starting at scratch again.
Okay, that's, that's not exactly correct, but I can say, um, that. The bid was put in. And when the bid was put in, it included, we sat at this meeting thinking there was for Trumbull County properties. But yeah, the bid that was submitted included one for a property that's outside of Trumbull County. We cannot expend any money from our ARPA or general fund, anything or your bonds for anything outside of the county. However, if it did come to opioid funds. That relate to the MOU that we have from one Ohio, that includes a region. And services Mahoning County as well. That's, that's different, but it would have to be that property.
No, no funds have been delineated, no funds have been spent.
Or identified either.
No, they haven't.
Okay, or identify, but what, okay, so the reality is we're going to stakeholder meetings pretending that we have the funds available to commit. And we don't.
We're not pretending. We're, we're still sifting through that, making sure we're doing our due diligence.
Right. We may not have to put a penny up. We might just have the back part of a loan. That's a local loan with, or local bank here in Trumbull County.
Guaranteeing a loan is, is first of all, we have to make sure that we're allowed. I would love it if we could. Find out definitively if that's permitted because I don't think that it is for the county to guarantee a loan for this. And also if you're looking at the pro forma, uh, that they're submitting to us, it's using years. That loan would never be underwritable by.
So Commissioner, are you looking for ways to not help the hospital or are you looking for ways to help the hospital? You're on one side of the line or the other?
Let me continue to.
Look for legal ways to help the hospital. Let's spend our time doing that and not looking, looking for ways to.
I'm trying, I'm trying to help the hu- hospital, but in a sustainable way. And whoever ends up in control or ownership of that property. And has a hospital there, if they have that same amount that they're using for lease service, they're going to be in the same position. That Trumbull Memorial was because.
Everybody knows that.
Commissioner, this is a fluid process. We don't even know if MPT is taking it over.
There, yeah.
We don't know yet.
Consultant that's working to redo the lease.
Let me just be perfectly candid right here in my discussion at a public meeting. Yes, at that stakeholders' meeting, there was an attorney and there was, and there was a consultant.
He has a hundred attorneys that work for Jack Diamond, one hundred attorneys.
Let me, let me finish what I'm saying. I'm going to finish what I'm saying. And while we were there. Neither of them called in and heard the hearing that occurred the previous Friday. They weren't aware of the filing that happened on. Labor Day. And it's concerning.
They're the ones that filed it.
No.
Yes, they are. Health, health care is the one that filed it.
There, the pleadings that occurred on Monday were related to. Do you not, do you not follow the?
So you, I, we've been to so many meetings that you haven't been at. You want to pipe in your two cents worth.
She's been to one meeting now and she.
One that I've seen. Two meetings that I've seen. One was a.
Finish what I'm, I am going to finish what I'm saying.
And then you held an irresponsible press conference in your living room telling people, have a great weekend. Everything's great. You had no information. You had no new information.
I did.
You were so far outside of the loop.
You have.
People in the room didn't even know who you were.
You have no, it's unfortunate that the consultants aren't letting people know the implications of the pleading.
It's our consultants, they're professionals that flip.
They're not following it.
Is that what you do for a living now?
They weren't.
You're gonna add that to your resume?
Let me, let me.
Professional hospital saver.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say what I'm, I'm going to finish my statement. I'm going to finish my statement.
I don't know if you're campaigning for, for commission. I don't know what you're doing with this stuff, but you should tell facts.
Going to finish my statement. Last, let me explain this to you because you don't know what happened. Last, last Friday, there was a hearing on the motion that Stewart Health made to sever their lease with MPT. At that emergency hearing in Judge Lopez's courtroom. I was the only person of the stakeholders group, group, including the Jack Diamond and the consultant were not on the phone. At that hearing, they, they had an agreement in principle that, that would cause MPT. To carry the remaining costs in order to keep the hospitals open. So when I was in my living room excited, it was because I knew that the.
The MPD said at that hearing, we don't want the Ohio and Pennsylvania hospitals and that's to be decided on September tenth.
At that hearing. He indicated that the carrying costs were going to be covered by MPT in order to keep those hospitals open during negotiations. That is what I heard. That is what happened. And the people from the media who listened to it also understood that. Subsequently, on Tues- Monday during the holiday. Cause I've been following the docket, Stewart Health filed, uh, two motions and one of them related to the lease and waiting until. They requested ninety days from the. The bankruptcy court to manage their leases and that's something that the, um. Attorney in the room. Or the consultant, while we were sitting there, I sent an email with the actual. Link to that journal action from the docket. To ask them to explain it and they both said that they couldn't because they hadn't seen it yet. So I have concerns whenever we're getting pro formas that say that. The hospital will be able to survive with seven point five or seven, I think it's almost, yeah, I think it's seven point five million dollar. The lease based for that property is seventy-five point eight million dollars. MPT is absolutely scandalous. Okay, they are just as bad in that scheme as Stewart. And if you look at their books, which are public, you'll see that recent, they, they even had. Northside Hospital, which we all know in our community is in shambles. It's a liability. They have it listed as valued at eleven million dollars right now. That's, that's how shady MPT is. The pleadings that, that they filed in bankruptcy court steward. Is acknowledging that it was kind of, that they weren't paying the lease, that the hospital was struggling and suffering. And the fact that the person leading the charge, Delta, Delta, this, this man that you have so much faith in. Tom McNaul was acknowledging that he was at the headquarters. With MPT over in Birmingham, Alabama.
Right.
Right? Doesn't that cause you any pause?
He went down there early on to try to renegotiate the lease, which is what needs to be done.
All that what you said has already been known and.
There's no breaking news.
There's no breaking news here. We know that.
If someone's, if someone's renegot- the, the only path forward.
About Ray Smith prints in the paper that you said MPT is a disgusting company. They're horrible, they're vomitable. And then we gotta go deal with them as a community?
The only path forward for a sustainable hospital in Trumbull County is to acquire it for. Its current value. It was over appraised and it was fraudulent and we shouldn't be put in a position. Where the next hospital will be doomed to failure with that same. Carrying that same amount.
What do you recommend?
I recommend. Looking to purchase that asset that they've already made the money back from the, not us.
Now you want to buy the hospital.
Not us.
You're gonna make them sell to you?
Whoever is doing it. They've already made their money back on the Space Coast properties, which sold for four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. So they had a portfolio that included, that included Sharon, Sharon, Trumbull, Hillside. And I believe it was Elm Road. And they had. The three hospitals in Florida. So they, they were the worst landlord. They took all those funds. From here, diverted them to Florida to dress up those properties in order to sell them for four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars. And then we have our hospital deteriorating. Do we, were they had to use space heaters in patients' rooms this last year?
So we. Again, we know all this. We know all this.
So you're saying then scrap the hospital?
We don't need.
They're all the landlords, people have the buildings, so scrap it. Is that what you're saying?
We don't need a consultant on board who is giving us information that, that shows that we will be paying that same lease amount.
Maybe they should hire you to consult the deal then.
Maybe they should.
Did you really just say that with any part of a straight face at all? Unbelievable.
It's not viable. It's not going to continue. So any agreement where they're saying, hey, what they're trying to do, let me explain. What MPT is trying to do is preserve their portfolio by looking like they have leases for these high amounts. So if they're going to say, we're going to do a lease with you for this much money. And then we're going to abate it for these many years. They're basically using us to lie to their shareholders. It's not, if anyone who does any due diligence and is aware of what's going on, they're, they're. They're not, let's just say they're not a good landlord. There's a list of capital improvements.
They are the landlord. They own the building. We can't change that. So what do you recommend?
That's what I said.
The only other option is we walk away and the hospital dies. Is that what you recommend?
They know what hap, they know what happened and, and they know what happened with Northside. And I think that, that they, they're going to be in a position, you know.
Given that.
We, we know all that. We, we, we know all that. We, we need a path forward.
Nobody knew what happened at that meeting and, and, and no one's, no, or I'm sorry, at the, at the hearings, no one's following the docket. And I have grave concerns about people who are driving, leading the ship. And we have, and, and we have a hospital and employees and jobs and revenue and all these things at stake. And, and the leadership of the group is not aware of basic things. And you're looking at me like I don't know what I'm talking about. And I'm the only one who was on the call for Judge Lopez's hearing last Friday that.
Do you want a medal for that? What, what do you want? What are you trying to say?
What I'm saying is you guys were, were.
You guys, it's the whole community. What are you saying?
The whole community.
They own the building. That's what we have to deal with. We're bound to that.
I'm saying, you just said that I didn't know what I was talking about on my interview. That's because no one in the group was aware of what happened because it wasn't being.
So everybody have a great weekend. Things are great and rosy and it's gonna be saved.
It was gonna be opened and now they need to raise money. And exactly that's what happened. The.
So that's where we're at. Okay. I don't understand.
Where we're at is I don't, I, I'm, I'm questioning whether or not the county should even work to put up funds with MPT. Being connected to it with that base lease rate.
We are very aware of that.
Saying, this all is they own the building, then you don't want us to give any funds. You want us to withdraw all our funds to save the hospital? You know what happens then?
That's what I said.
Then the jobs leave. Then eight hundred people lose their jobs and it's Nikki French goes.
There is an upcoming meeting where you have to say that we've got these funds secured. At some point, they're going to have to be put in escrow. At some point.
We are not at that point yet, Commissioner.
Is so soon. We were asked about it this week.
It's not so soon.
Okay, Richard.
You're saying, no, don't put it in escrow.
Read the agenda.
Is that what you're saying?
Read the agenda for this week's meeting because it relates to making sure that the funds are shored up.
Is that what you're saying? Then we withdraw all our funds and let the hospital sink? Is that what you're saying?
I think that we need to be more actively involved in the pro forma and the lease. I mean, they're not, they don't even, effective this agreement, they're not even gonna have a lease. And there are federal rules that prohibit an REIT, which is what they are, from owning so much of their portfolio. And so I, I don't know what's gonna happen, but I'm interested in seeing. And I think that they're, I think they might be screwing around with us. And I, I, I'm, I'm curious as to how close Tom is with these folks because he said he was at the MPT's headquarters.
MPT, when they get the assets on September 10th, if they get them, consult whoever they want. They could pull some company we never heard of and sell the hospital to them.
Yes.
We're not in the driver's seat. It's their building. We can't make them give their building up.
You got that. So here's, here's what I'm saying then. So they could do whatever they want with that building.
Correct.
So if they're going to give us a lease, they're going to give our local community a lease with an abatement for us to dress up this building. And then they could sell it right from under. You don't know what's gonna happen. I just don't know that it's, it's a, it's a, it's a wise investment. The way things are moving forward.
Okay, so you would did a big roller coaster loop. So what are you saying? You don't want to help the hospital with our money? Are you saying we should retract our three million dollar commitment?
One, we need to know exactly what's allowable. If we could even waive privilege and have a, have a, have a public discussion. So that we go to a meeting without saying that we're gonna put money in escrow next week when we don't have it.
We haven't said that.
That's what's, they're, they're asking for.
But that's not where we're at yet. They're asking for that, but that doesn't mean that's where the county has to be at. The revenue, when you look at the pro forma, the revenues have to match the expenditures and they're carrying a lot of bad debt. And when you look at this, they have to outperform what they did in two thousand nineteen, which is, which is very difficult, very difficult.
The pro forma that we have doesn't even, doesn't even show recent years. They, they.
You can't. It's COVID years. Everything was probed up by fake COVID money. Every hospital was probed up by COVID money. You can't use that data.
That's why we're putting COVID data and we're using.
See, again, if, if any, any underwriter is going to look at the current years, the most recent three years, they're not going to. In the year-to-date, they're not going to look back at good years in order to make, to make you look solvent.
They're gonna look, they're gonna look at the last three years where Stewart lied and took the profits out of the hospital and put them in another hospital.
They're gonna look at the last three years.
The books are horrible, the last three years. You can't judge that at all.
So that, can I see them? Can we see, can the stakeholders see them?
We did see them. We, we had a conference call that you weren't, weren't a part of that we had one on Sunday. We had a meeting at seven seventeen in person. We all saw him. Everyone that was there.
I, again, this is even more concerning that you're saying that we're gonna look at good years instead of the actuals.
No, actually, it's the, the, the years that we're looking at are more realistic than those other years from twenty twenty to now. Those are more realistic, going back to twenty nineteen.
Also include a property that's not in the offer. Those numbers of revenue include funds that aren't even in the offer.
But the, the, that property in question is profitable by their own books. And it was said yesterday and you were sitting in the room, four people away from the guy, when he told you the profits of Hillside.
Hillside is different, but the, the actual money that, that our auditor got, that everyone has includes revenue. That's not from the property that's going to be purchased. So we would have to see those delineated. We would have to see those delineated per building. So that we can act, so that the auditor and everyone involved can actually see. You can't say, we're gonna buy Austintown, but we're gonna include Elm, you know, this one in our books. I think it even included Elm Road in the finances. There's nothing on there. I think I have a copy of it here.
Doesn't matter if you have a copy of it or not.
May I speak, please?
Audit a yoder, please.
Martha, you're a Trumbull County auditor. First of all, I'm not evaluating anything. What I'm looking at or what I'm doing is passing it on to the ARPA attorney. Um, that's, I haven't been tasked with evaluating this. What I have been tasked with is passing things on to the ARPA attorney. In that light, I received the pro forma from Cindy Russo yesterday. In addition to that, I received the income statement from Victoria Faris, the attorney. Um, I went back and forth a little bit because I wasn't sure what I was allowed to share. The income statement, by the way, is, and I'm not sure if the pro forma is or not off the top of my head. The income statement is designated as trade secrets, so it is not a public record. Um, I want to ask the commissioners two questions. First of all, she did not want me to pass the pro forma on. I can give the pro forma to Mr. Danzo, but not to the outside attorney per her request. I want to make sure you guys are okay with that. Second, I can pass on the income statement to Attorney Rogers. And I want to make sure that I, that you guys are all right with that, that the majority of them.
Pass on the income statement?
To Attorney Rogers. It's a trade secret, but I have been given permission from Victoria Faris to do so.
Um, but, but you're not gonna.
She requested not the pro forma. She felt that the income statement would be sufficient. However, it isn't, if it is not sufficient, we can always go back and, and pass on what, what the pro forma or requests that. The other part of this is my asking for your permission to give, and I will also work with Victoria Faris on this. To, so that I am not the go-between in this, to allow Victoria Faris and Attorney Rogers to talk to each other. So that, that it, it's less of a go-between. So that if, just like we do with some of these other requests where we have requesters and Attorney Rogers reaches out to them and asks questions.
Here's a question that I have, completely valid, and I think we need to find this out. Who is the client for Victoria Faris? So if she is.
Warren Hospital, Inc., Warren City Hospital, Inc.
Know that.
They said it yesterday. That's who contracted Delta Healthcare.
So this income statement, is it delineated per property?
The title of it, and again, this is why I would prefer that Attorney Rogers be allowed to talk back and forth and ask those questions. So we're not doing this in a public meeting and I'm dealing with something that's not a public record. Um, the title of the, of the PDF is Trumbull Regional Medical Center. That's all I know.
I don't think that it's enough information for even.
Well, and I'm going to let, but, but shall we let Attorney Rogers make that decision for us with regard to ARPA funds? Because that's what her job is. The other part of this that I was, that I wanted to get to, I, I have those questions.
The commissioners don't know what is on that income statement. And it, to our eyes, it's not satisfying, then it, I think we need to see that before we approve. Her conversations and to know who exactly she's working for. Because it, some, obviously attorneys work for who they, their, their clients are. It, we're not the clients and they're going to, to, to try to qualify things that we don't even. So we've got different things going on. We've got the, the offer that was made, um, which I could send you a copy of as all.
That offer is a moot point. That we're not dealing, that offer is made to somebody who's not gonna be in control of even accepting the offer.
And again, my, my question for the majority of the board is what you wish me to do. The other thing that Ms. Faris, Attorney Faris pointed out to me is, although we have outside counsel on this. Is that the governor's office in conversation with her had said that they had a contact at Ohio Office of Budget and Management. That will also review eligibility of ARPA funds for this.
Thank you.
And they wanted to know if I wanted that contact. So I need some instruction from the majority of the board.
Yes.
I would like.
I would say yes or see.
All, on all of the above.
All the above.
Right, thank you.
I would like to see this document. Understanding that it's a trade secret, just to see if it's delineated, because we need to make sure that the properties.
I will ask Attorney Faris if I may share it with you.
Okay.
We're still waiting for an answer from you, Commissioner. What are you, what are you saying in this? You saying withhold the three million dollars? Is that what you're recommending?
Thing, we need to know where it's coming from. We need to, and we need to make sure that it's a sustainable, viable operation. And, and.
That's what our, that's what our resolution statement.
Should be for whoever the community hospital is to acquire. That's for fair market value. They've already, MPT has already made their money back and then some, especially with the Space Coast sale. And we need to move forward as a, as a community or whoever is trying to buy it in a way that they can reinvest. Money back into the property. The other thing is, is that, that when the state spends money. For capital improvements for communities or what have you, they're not going to improve a hospital that's owned by. A real estate investment trust. They're not capable of doing something for a property legally. For shareholders to make money. So if the ownership is transferred to a nonprofit or. What have you that's trying to improve, that for the community sake, then. The governor and capital funds could be invested to those improvements that have been ignored. Uh, causing the lack of care, appropriate care to patients.
All right, we're, we're losing people here.
MPT is not gonna give up their property. So that's, that's not even realistic.
Yeah. We, we have to deal in, in what is realistic and what is right in front of us. And that is, MPT does own the property.
I don't think you guys have done due diligence.
It's not our job to, to get to that point at this point yet.
To do diligence, to do due diligence.
Okay.
I don't know. I, I just think you just set the hospital back five steps in your comments here today. And if Ray prints those things, God help us with what the community is gonna believe about, about our involvement with this. I support saving the hospital, uh, for one, Commissioner Cantal Mesa. At anything, anything we have to do, we should do, is what I believe. Not poo poo on the idea, not criticize the people that are doing the plan.
At stake than you, Danny.
You have more at stake than me?
To make sure that it's sustainable.
What the?
Related to saving the hospital. I'm sorry. It's in, it's in my backyard. It's my community. I don't want to see another new old Saint Joe's.
It's all of our community.
It's all of our problem.
Make sure that whatever happens that, that with the next ownership, there's not just a little small window that they're able to operate with, with.
Well, you're doing, you're doing your best today to make sure that someday it's a big green space where somebody can plant a community garden. And not have a place that employs eight hundred people.
Okay.
Mr. Glenn.
Behind there from where they tore down a school.
I had the floor.
We, we.
You have the floor, sir.
It would be nice if we had the attorney generals involved in too, because this is predatory, what they're doing.
He's been asked. He was asked in April. There were people that met with him back in April to bring this up.
They don't, but there, there's.
He finally wrote a letter last week.
There are new developments.
Mr. Glenn.
Hi, Mr. Glenn, Trumbull County. Um, I'm here to speak about nine one one. First and foremost. I am in no way disparaging our nine one one operators. I've been to enough meetings here that I know. They're understaffed, overworked, and I'd really just like to know that. You guys are committed to recruiting, advertising to get more operators. Um, sometimes things happen that bring up feelings in your life. And when I was a young boy, my mother suffered from grandma seizures. And by the phone in the house, we had the seven-digit numbers to WFD and the local ambulance company. And a post that was on social media the other day that I'd like to read. It's from a, a woman that says, today was absolutely ridiculous. I called nine one one and the emergency number. No one answered either one. My mom was showing signs of a stroke. She couldn't walk and I couldn't move her on my own to the car. I had to call someone to help me get her into the car. When I arrived to the hospital, I was asked, what took you so long? Thank goodness my mom is still here and I had someone to call. How is this okay? However, I had the best and prompt treatment and care from Trumbull Memorial. And I'd like to say that I agree with you, Mr. Malloy. I'm a double alumni member of Hillside Hospital for my injuries. I was born at Trumbull. All my family was born at Trumbull. My mother worked at Trumbull. So anything and everything we can do to save both locations would be welcomed. Now, like I said, I am not disparaging our workers at nine one one, but please do everything you can. Because it could be one of us that calls and the call gets dropped from a glitch from something. I know Ms. Goldner is aware of this and talked to Mr. Cantal Mesa about it. Um, if there's anything we can do, a public hiring event, people mentioned on this post, excuse me, ma'am, I'm not done yet.
Right.
People.
I'm, I'm wondering what was said, like, did, did.
I just read it.
No, I, I read it too. Okay. What I'm saying is I wonder what the response was from nine one one because it was horrible what happened with, with the situation. So can we.
Call nine one one if you read it. Did you call them?
Can we, can we publicly discuss what actually happened at nine one one to cause this?
Well, since she didn't call anybody when you read it, I called the assistant director.
The guy to give us the answers of what happened to nine one one. The person to give us the answers is not here.
I think it's.
We're not gonna do hypotheticals.
Line malfeasance. You see that online and you don't call the nine one one director to see what's going on. But anyway.
So I saw it online.
Happened on my way to the hospital meeting the other day.
You called nine one one director. No, you didn't. Okay, so I called Patty Goldner. She reached out to the individual that wrote that. She reached out to the individual that wrote that. Actually, I take that back. Some, somebody, somebody instant messaged me through Facebook and said, you got to see what somebody wrote on such and such page. I don't remember what it was. I asked for that woman's number, had Patty Goldner contact her in hopes that she could contact the person that was actually making the post. The last I heard, she talked to her and there was no, she called the non-emergency line, first of all. But there was no record of that individual giving that name on the non-emergency line. So that's where we're at with that right now. So I don't, we're, we're still sifting through that, but Patty's still looking into it and trying to contact that person. There's no record of that person actually calling the, the non-emergency line, according to what we can tell.
I, I just wanted to bring it up, but like in no way.
Answering the non-emergency.
I know these people work their butts off.
We don't know that.
That, there were people answering the non-emergency line, but sometimes there aren't. We don't have enough people, unfortunately.
If you looked, if you looked at the performance review that we got yesterday on nine one one, the study that was conducted there, right now feasibility plan, we have less than eighteen employees. The plan says we need forty. We, we were hoping to get to twenty five. The plan says to run a center of that size with the number of people we have, we need forty employees. We're twenty-two employees short at that facility from them operating on what the state standard is and what they want us to be. We need to hire people. We need good people to apply to nine one one. We've never said we won't pay for them. We never said we won't take them. We're hiring any good bodies that want to work there.
But it's a tough job.
It's a tough job. It's not for everybody. We need to find those special people in the community that can do that type of work, that'll do that job. But we need them. We can't materialize them. We can't produce them. We've been hiring this for a year and a half since I've been here and we keep going backwards because of the line of work that it's in. Corrections officers, nine one one operators, EMTs, firemen, paramedics. They're dying field out there because of what the pay disparity is with the rest of the world. We need good people to apply. That's the bottom line with that. And we can't just make somebody who's already working sixty hours a week, some of them sixty-five hours a week at nine one one. We had some of them making close to, working close to eighty hours a week at nine one one. For the last couple of years, we're allowing that. We can't do that anymore. We need fresh bodies. We need bodies in seats to handle this thing. So we can't criticize the employees there. We can't criticize the administration that's there until we have bodies in those seats answering the calls.
There clearly is a problem there if employees don't stay and they leave as quickly as they do.
Of course, it's the line of work that they're in.
A lot of, a lot of people commented on there that they didn't know where and how to apply. So is there any possible way we can have like a public hiring event? See how many.
They are looking in many ways. They're supposed to have it posted everywhere. We've talked about jobs fairs. We talked about going into schools to recruit for people at TCTC and other places, the business colleges, the thing. They've got, the word is out there.
A, a lot of individuals use that sometimes as a stepping stone to be a police officer to, you know, they, they don't make it a career, unfortunately. So you have a lot of turnover and, and right, wrong, or indifferent, that's where we're at with that. And, and I will say Patty also contacted that, that female on Messenger and no reply. So she's tried to look her up on, on the, on the non-emergency line. There's no, there's no name there. And she tried to contact her on Messenger to, to no avail either. So we're trying to work through that and trying to find out exactly what happened.
They probably took nine thousand calls last month and that's one that someone throws on Facebook. And until you verify the validity of it, it's.
And, and again, probably should have been an emergency call, but it went to the, they called the non-emergency.
I think the post said they called both numbers to no avail. But like I said, I, I don't want to throw any workers under the bus because I know from meetings that they do a wonderful job. And, and in the line of first responders, I think nine one one operators are the first responder. Because you're making a call to them. And, you know, like I said, when I was a young man and my mother needed attention, we called the seven-digit number and in two minutes, we could hear sirens and we knew where they were coming.
And, and that's something we need to appeal to the state also. By the state standards, they're not considered first responders or emergency personnel. They're considered clerks, clerical. That's how the state, that's with the retirement, their state, everything that they rank them as. They're not first responders. We need to change that. Well, we need to appeal to our legislators to change that.
Absolutely.
They are first responders.
Thank you for your time.
And on a separate note, I've met with both of our state, well, our incoming state representative, Thomas and with State Representative Santucci about that issue and about raising that issue. They assured me that that is on their radar and they were going to look into it. So I will follow up with that as well.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Okay, again, we invite everybody to be out front next Tuesday for the grocery truck. And then our meeting will be at eleven on Tuesday instead of ten thirty.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.